Community Development Committee meeting, I guess, Bridgette, you're gonna handle this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Tonight's special committee session is to seek council authorization with emergency of an access agreement to allow for the implementation of a remediation plan to prevent the migration of subsurface petroleum from reaching the Cuyahoga River. You may remember, I was before you in 2016 with the representatives from ABB, the owner of the 800 Mogadore site, to address a petroleum migration in an area known as the North Ditch. A secondary location has been identified, and ABB and the certified professional consultants they have been working with have been in consultation with the Ohio EPA on the development of a plan. They are working with them as part of the voluntary action program memorandum agreement, or VAT MOA, process. At this point in time, I would like to turn it over to Melody Christopher. She's the environmental project manager for ABB. They are gonna do a brief PowerPoint, 10 minutes or less, and then they're gonna open it up to questions after that. Melody?
Thank you, Bridgette. You're a little taller than me, so I'll just take this down. That's okay. I really appreciate all your time. My name is Melody Christopher. I work for ABB. We purchased Thomas &amp; Betts. Since 2017, I've been managing the cleanup for 800 Mogadore Road, and the North Ditch project came to me, as Bridgette mentioned. This is a continuation of the North Ditch. What we have is some oil that is on the city property in Fuller Park that we want to clean up. Our goal tonight is to get access to do that work from you. We really want to do it quickly. We're hoping to get in and out before the winter starts. We don't want to be working in difficult conditions. The work will be conducted by ABB Installation Products and its contractors. There'll be no actual actions required of the city itself. We just need your permission to proceed. I have brought my contractors with me. I have Matt Connect from HCW. He's our certified professional who's been managing the project. And Ben Idon from Wood. They are our remedial design partners. And so, they have a very brief presentation. Because your time is very valuable, I would ask that you ask the questions at the end of the presentation, so that we can move through it quickly.
Thanks, Melody. And again, thank you very much for everyone on council for your time this evening. If you want to swing out and see the presentation or turn around, we'll move through it pretty quickly. But, is somebody gonna advance slides for me, Ben? Sorry about that. So, we have a slide that will show that we have an off-property oil seep that has manifested itself on ground surface in Fuller Park. And I'm gonna let Ben get over there and advance the slides, and we will... But this, it's remote from the ball fields. It is in Kramer... That's Kramer Ford in the background. And so, we have been regularly containing the oil with the absorbent booms, the white objects there by the snow fence. We've also erected a snow fence to prevent people from accessing the area. And we've... These measures have been in place since this was discovered in 2017. We refer to it as off-property area of interest 01. You may hear me refer to it as OPAI 01, or it may show up on maps like that. Next slide, Ben. So, the 800 Mogadore Road property is outlined in red, and then up above is the seep in light blue, and you'll see Fuller Park further up the top. That just gives you a little bit of context about the entire setting. Next. Our remedial action goals are to, as Melody indicated, to prevent oil from emanating to surface water, either the North Ditch, or it's tributary to the Cuyahoga River. We want to prevent people from having contact with it. And also, if we had oil get into the stream, that would pose an ecological risk, potentially to aquatic organisms. And let's... It's not a good aesthetic for a park setting to have oil emanating from the ground. So, we want to eliminate the aesthetic of oil in a park. The proposed remedial actions are essentially three things. We intend to install a barrier wall, think of sheet piling into the ground, upgrade into the seep to arrest the continued migration of oil toward the seep. We would like to conduct targeted soil removal in the seep itself, to remove the contaminated soils that are there. And then backfill that with an absorptive material, and cap it to eliminate any surface expression of the seep. So, we just don't have any evidence of the seep anymore, so. We have conducted a number of investigations, both on-property and off-property. You'll see on this map is, the Mogadore Road property is toward the bottom of the map, and then at the top of the map is seep. All the devices in red have free oil on groundwater in them. So, all of them, red ones have oil, the black ones do not. So, we feel we've pretty much got it figured out, that this is in a very narrow band that's emanating from the 800 Mogadore Road site toward the seep. So, the specific things we need access for are, we... There's a path that First Energy created through the trees, from the railroad parks to Fuller... Kramer Fields. We intend to utilize that to get to the railroad tracks, to be able to drive vehicles up and down the tracks, CSX's tracks. So, we also would need access to Fuller Park for the path, for the bridge, for trucks, Redmond Bridge, the one-lane road bridge into the park, trucks driving through the park, and then a staging area for equipment and supplies, which are not in the park, but they're near the seep work area, and that is also land that's owned by the city. We'll show you that here in just a second. But those are our specific access needs. The yellow line shows where we'd propose to access the work area. Again, we'd come through Fuller Park, the path through the trees, the railroad tracks is the one that First Energy created during a recent power problem. And then we would move up CSX's tracks. We have a separate agreement with CSX that we're continuing, Melody's continuing to work with them on that. And then we'd access it that direction. The specific remedy, this is a little bit more of a blow-up. Again, the green is the sheet pile wall. The linear feature is the sheet pile wall that we would put upgrading to the seep. The hatched area is the green area where we'd do limited excavation and apply the absorptive cap in that area. And again, the red devices all have oil in them, the black ones do not. So, it would be our hope that we would be able to capture the oil behind the seep, behind the sheet pile wall. So, afterwards, we would perform visual monitoring to make sure we got it, and it doesn't re-manifest itself. We would address our on-property source area, so it just doesn't continue to be emanating underneath the railroad tracks. We would reinstall some of the monitoring wells that we will probably destroy when we bring vehicles in us. So, we have the ability to monitor and remove oil between the source area on the 800 Mogadore Road property and the location of the former seep. Removal, we have... There's various ways of going about that, but that would be the plan. And then, as always, we'd continue coordination with the city and Ohio EPA. Restoration security, we're really attempting to limit tree removal to the extent possible, because we just were out at the site trying to just count trees and see what we might have to move. We would restore trees per any kind of plan we worked out with the city. And at the end, what will it look like? It'll be an excavation area, it'll be topped with topsoil, and we'll allow it to revegetate naturally. We would not like to encourage trees to grow on it, because it's kind of counterproductive. And then, there would be gates and fences temporarily erected to restrict access to the railroad right-of-way. The last thing we want is somebody getting vehicular access directly between the park and the railroad tracks. It's not a good idea, so. Now, with that, I think we tried to keep this pretty brief, so if you have any questions, or Melody, would you like to add any clarification?
Heidi?
Yeah, you alluded to this, but I was wondering, you know, it seems like a seep is just something that you kind of, like, try to cover up, but with all those other, I guess, sites that have oil in them, what other kinds of remediation? Can you pump it out? Can you, you know, is there enough oil in there to do it, get it out?
So, sometimes. This particular site is pretty limited for access, as you can probably see on the aerial. You can see that although there are utilities that run through the area, there are not utilities that service the area. So, we don't have a sewer line, or any buildings, we don't have electricity to the area. You know, we are going to be looking to do removal and containment actions at the source, which is here, on the 800 Mogadore Road site. And we're working on that. We'll continue to work with Ohio EPA. That's on a voluntary basis as well, under the VAT MOA program. We will be putting together a remedial action plan, which will be submitted to the state. It will be reviewed by the state and subject to public comment. And the details for that will be forthcoming on a parallel track.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any other questions? John?
Maybe I should ask this one to Dave. Is this an addition of the one they worked on all last year, or just like an extension of the seep?
Yeah, go ahead.
Actually, this is a secondary site. What you were seeing last year, and you're referring to they were doing a lot of sampling and testing, they installed monitoring wells, and were onsite, basically collecting the information in order to develop the proposed remediation plan in consultation with the Ohio EPA. So, what you were seeing was not actually cleanup, you were seeing testing.
So, there was no, even like, next to the river from going under the tracks, and well, that's a different or the same?
Right, right. The North Ditch, back in 2016, that cleanup has been completed. So, this is a secondary location where that migration of the subsurface petroleum has been identified.
Roger.
Bridgette, is this the result of a failed process that, when we first, that land was first fixed? We, I know we had containment in there, we had...
There's multiple... First, I'd also like to say, ABB bought the site, and it has been a pleasure to work with them for the last two years, because from 2011 until about 2017, when I started working with Melody, it was a challenge getting information on the site. We do have full understanding now of the various issues that need to be addressed on the site. The original item, though, was the slurry wall on the south side, and that was for a different containment, that was for chlorinated solvents. That is on the private site only, and they are also working on a remediation plan for that, under VAT MOA with the Ohio EPA. The city will not be involved with that unless there is migration off, and again, it starts coming to the city's property.
So, this was something that's just occurred since the original...
I believe it's a legacy issue that goes back decades from the way the plant was being operated, and how, they literally had open pools of petroleum. In fact, we have a representative here that was actually part of some of that initial work. So, it just has never really been fully dealt with.
Okay.
So, those legacy issues now are coming to the fore. And so, as part of this process, we're gonna now finally deal with them.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Anybody from the audience wanna discuss any of this? Going back to council. Dave?
It says access agreement to Mogadore Road, is that what we're looking at?
Yeah, right-of-access agreement. Remember, you did one before, this is basically the same concept.
Anybody wanna make that motion?
Make a motion to prove it with emergency.
I'll second.
Second by... Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
One abstention. Okay. Time-wise, we're gonna move to Ben.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You wanna get any sort of control? 22 rescue, so, you know, we're here tonight to recognize the men that did this, and for the most part, saved some lives, and the safety of this department is out there in the community for us all. So, I'll turn it over to Chief Tosco at this time.
Well, thank you again, council, for allowing us to spend a few minutes. A lot of you were upstairs looking at a new heavy rescue, and looking at the water rescue equipment that we had. That's just the equipment part of it. What really makes it all happen is these gentlemen back here, and these gentlemen over here, making it all happen. It's tremendous amount of training, just to get to a point where you could do a basic rescue. And what these guys did this summer was way, way more than a basic rescue. It was really truly life-saving abilities. It really was. There were a lot of people in harm's way, and I'm very, very thankful to the Lord that we did not have, you know, anyone pass, anyone die during this, all these incidents. We were very lucky and very fortunate, and it's all due to these guys back here. So, I would like to just spend a few minutes in awarding them a life-saving medal that we have, so they'll be wearing it on their Class A uniform when they go out. Do I need the microphone?
You can take it off if you want.
It comes off. No, just take the microphone off.
I wanna have my hands...
All right.
The floor is yours.
The entire building's yours.
I don't like that. Say that louder.
It won't happen often.
So, you know, we had all that heavy rain, starting in, actually, probably late May. Early June, for some reason, all just snuck up on us. All of a sudden, we got our first rescue. It was June 8th. Back in June 8th, I remember it was a pretty nice day, a nice and sunny day. It was one of the first nice sunny days after all these storm after storm after storm. So, our first rescue call came in. He was actually, ended up being in Stowe. So, picture the Millbury Boat Ramp, go downstream into Stowe, and there was a tree down that had just fallen, because the roots were very weakened. The guys put the boat in at Millbury Boat Ramp, went down, and saw two people just barely clinging to this tree branch. Mind you, the only people able to call out there were people who are boating by, and none of them have cell phones. So, it's not until they get downstream, all the way to Monterey Falls, that they're able to call. So, they were hanging on for quite a while. So, I'd like to recognize firefighter Scott Craig. Scott Craig was, basically, he went in, grabbed two people, and brought them on the boat, just by his sheer strength of getting these people up. As soon as he got those two people up, another lady came by in a kayak. They kept telling her, "Stay back, hang back," and she wanted to see what was going on, and she went in. They had to go get her as well. So, I would like to recognize Scott Craig for his heroic efforts in performing a life-saving rescue in the Cuyahoga River on June 8th, 2019.
Yeah.
So, we had about a 10-day, 11-day break, for some reason. Lot more storms came in, I think the weather turned bad, nobody was out. We finally had another nice day. And on June 19th, we had five different people in five different kayaks go down, still in that same area, in the, went into Millbury Boat Ramp, north of there, I'm sorry, south of there, downstream, in the Stowe, we had a lot of people going in. In that case, we had firefighter Gary Lang help pull, like I said, pull the five people out of the water that day, and we had multiple victims that day. So, Gary? So, again, recognized for his heroic efforts in performing a life-saving rescue in the Cuyahoga River on June 19th. Gary, please. Okay, then things started really heating up about that time. Still a lot of water, a lot of fast, fast water. And on June 22nd, we had several calls. On June 22nd, we had a very dangerous situation in the middle of the river. We started moving upstream about this time. We started moving up towards the dam, towards the island, and the water level was very treacherous, especially up that far north, where all the trees were down. Remember, the more rain we get, the more root systems are washed out, more trees go down. And that's been our, really, our big problem this whole summer. So, we had several members. We had Jake Robinson as our next recipient. He worked with firefighter Murphy and Taylor in a very dangerous situation right in the middle of the river, which is some of the most dangerous areas. So, Jake? I'd like to recognize Jake. I'd like to recognize Jake for his heroic efforts in performing life-saving rescues on June 22nd. Also, during that same efforts, we have James Taylor. James Taylor, again, the same, very treacherous conditions, and they all worked together, all three of those guys worked together. So, I'd like to recognize James, and for his heroic efforts performing life-saving rescue on June 22nd. And last, but certainly not least, Brock Murphy. And actually, Brock, a lot of these guys, Brock was one of the earlier guys to do the water rescue technician, very proficient, and he's been doing this for a long time. And I'd like to recognize Brock Murphy for his heroic efforts in performing life-saving rescue in the Cuyahoga River, again, on June 22nd. Okay, then, that day, that was a Saturday, I believe. The very next day is Sunday. It was a very nice day today, that day also. On June 23rd, we had almost the same type of scenario. We had a lot of victims in the water, it was in towards the island. Again, we're moving upstream, in towards the island. We're still able to put the boat in at Tannery Park at that point, and still able to get upstream. Our next recipient is firefighter Sean Bangs, been recognized for his heroic efforts performing a life-saving rescue in the Cuyahoga River on June 23rd, 2019. We also have another individual here who's been involved in the water rescue scenario in Porter's County for a very long time. Scott has been, Scott Simmons has been involved in, you know, teaching, teaching a lot of us water rescue. He's a dive instructor for Dive Rescue International, he's an ice instructor, very, very proficient. And Scott found himself in a very, very dangerous condition one night. It was probably, I would think it's probably one of our most dangerous spots that any of us have been in that night, that afternoon. It was 2:30 on June 23rd. Scott had basically had to make a decision to jump out of the boat and grab this lady, I think it was a lady, female, pardon me?
It was a guy.
It was a guy, I'm sorry. Makes it even worse, the heart lighter, heavier, but Scott noticed that this guy was probably gonna drown, probably gonna go in and go under, so he made the decision to jump in. I think he kind of hurt his, tweaked his back that day, too, so he had a little injury. But, just very heroic life-saving effort. So, I'd like to recognize Scott Simmons for his heroic efforts in performing a life-saving rescue in the Cuyahoga River on June 23rd. So, Tyler Simkins could not be here tonight, but I want to tell you a little bit about Tyler. He's one of our newer guys. He came to us already, had some experience in water rescue, right? He was already on the dive team. And Scott was involved in another incident earlier that morning. We had two incidents on Saturday, and two again on that Sunday, the 23rd. We had two kayaks behind Trainor Restaurant, plus several other people out and about there who kept going in. So, we had, I think it got, weather got real nice, and people just started jumping in the water. So, I would like to recognize Tyler Simkins for his heroic efforts performing life-saving rescue on June 23rd. Tyler is actually in arson school right now, so he's down at the State Fire Academy, learning how to investigate fires. So, our, one of our last calls we had, if you remember, we had a little break, and then we had July 6th, which was Heric's Festival. We got the young man out. If you guys weren't there, you probably saw on YouTube, there's thousands of people looking at us, right at the end, in the evening, Heric's Festival. So, we rescued a young man there. But then, we had a little bit of a break until July 18th. The water level had come down a little bit, but about 9 o'clock, again, over by the chute and past the island, we had an individual in the water. It was nighttime. By the time they got set up, I think you probably heard the story earlier, though by the time we got set up, it was pitch black. So, we put our rescue truck on top of the Main Street Bridge with the light, and we brought lights down there, and we set the highlighting system up in there. And the last person I'd like to recognize is Matt Bright. So, Matt swam out, passed the river, and helped get people back onto the boat and back to the shore. So, Matt, I'd like to recognize you for your heroic efforts in performing life-saving rescue on July 18th. So, again, I'd really like to thank all of you. I mean, you showed so much interest in this, and given us the equipment and the manpower, the staffing to be able to do these types of rescues. I hope we never have another summer like this. We've always had probably four, five, maybe six at the most during any given time. We had 10 different instances with multiple people this time, and it's not just us, it's the Porter's County Water Rescue Team, it's not just these guys, it's all these other gentlemen here. Everybody else, I counted, everybody else in the whole fire department, at one point in time, was on at least one or two calls. And each one of them are going to receive a, call a unit citation, just for their valiant efforts and making sure that these guys were able to do their jobs. So, thank you very much.
How do we get a T-shirt?
Thank you, chief, and congratulations to y'all. Oh, all right.
I just wondered if they have any more.
Once again, if anybody wants to address council under public communication, please sign in with the clerk to be recognized. We're gonna start the regular council meeting. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Amrin?
Here.
Mr. DeLeon?
Here.
Mr. Farrar? Mr. Kuhar?
Say here.
Here, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Kuhar?
Here.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Here.
Ms. Schaefer?
Here.
Mr. Sidoti?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Ms. Wallach?
Here.
Okay, thank you. We have opening remarks and pledge of allegiance by Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes, I have one more thank you to our Kent Fire Department today, if you haven't seen it on Facebook. A couple of lucky students from the Kent Free Library Summer Reading Program were given a ride to school today in a fire truck. I'm jealous, I should have read more books, but thank you for that. I love it when our city organizations work together like that. So, today is the first day of school in Kent, so here's to a successful, fun, and safe new year to all of our Kent School District students, as well as our Kent State students, new and returning. So, I'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion for the minutes of the July 17th meeting. Second by who?
Second.
Second by Jack. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
One abstention. Under communication, audience participation, would the clerk please read the first name?
Jim Plymeyer?
You have three minutes. We asked, do you give your address, name, address, and I have something to read. While the law does not require council to provide time for the public comment, we have historically invited the public to make such comment, and we appreciate their input. This is a time when a resident or others can comment on matters that concern them. However, we will not engage in any debate, and as president of council, I reserve the right to end any public comments that are disruptive, embarrassing, harassing, or other words objectionable. We ask that you come to the podium, speak your name, your address clearly, and we will give you three minutes. So, what was the first name?
Jay Plymeyer?
Plymeyer.
Plymeyer, okay.
Well, give your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
I'm old-time landlord's in town, and I'm kind of getting ready to get out of the business. If anybody wants to buy anything, I got some stuff for sale. I guess my, I'm here for the housing thing that you're gonna talk about here pretty quick. And a couple of things I've been thinking about, and I assume a lot of departments receive this.
Just for the record, you had to do your name and address, just for the audio. Do your name and address for the audio.
Jay Plymeyer, 7437, 7437 Burkina Drive, Kent, Ohio.
Thank you.
I'm deaf, guys, I'm very deaf. You can yell all you want, here's your opportunity, especially for the women, and I can hear you better if you have any questions. I guess my problem comes from the fact that I can think of so many houses that sometime or another in the area have been rented. And you're talking about not so much the landlords in town that have a lot of real estate, but rather a few people that some, my neighbor across the street had a sabbatical one time, one of the sabbaticals disappeared for a year, and he rented his house. And he would be in violation of the code that we have today that you're talking about. I can think of some other situations where my, where one neighbor that, I'm not gonna mention names, because I know everybody here knows him, he would be in violation of the code. And these, everybody is known... And he's, everybody has known him for years and years and years, but he has a situation where that he has four unrelated people living in the house with him. And it's been like that for quite some time. And there's a variety of reasons for why it happened, but it's still the end of the rest of the case. I look at these, the Holmgren versus Yoder, vice versa, and certainly you've read it a million times, and a couple of things kinda stand out. Number one, the property owner's rights of the home, of the housing. I hate to say it, but I watched in my lifetime, a lot of people don't get married, and a huge number of people don't stay married. And you end up with a lot of single people living together. I have my help would be in violation of the housing code if he lived in the city of Kent. He actually lives in Ravenna Township. And I hate to see, I hate to see you fighting everybody. And that's sort of like where I'm coming from. It seems like to me that, that I wish they could, wish they could say that people got married and stayed together. I can think in their situations, they've been together for seven years, and they're not married. And they're in violation of the housing codes by, because of that. And I hate to see an extension of making everybody be illegal. So I'll let it go at that. Hey, thank you, guys. Some of you guys I know for quite a while, and I appreciate you two mayor, I didn't see at the corn festival, but I assume you will come next year.
Thank you. Next.
Kristin?
Kristin.
No, Kristin Buhum?
Bertheum, I know.
Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, my name is Kristin Bertheum. I'm at 851 Admore Drive here in Kent. My husband and I both also are Realtors here in Kent. My children go to school at Longkoy. And recently, we decided to invest even more in Kent. We purchased our first rentals. We bought a multifamily this year, and then also a single family over on Rockwell, which is why I'm here. I first learned about the residential licensing program in April, and I was a little bit taken back, because as a Realtor, we work very closely with Heather File, and on every property that we transfer, we need to get the buyer to sign off on the zoning certificate. So this being a pretty major thing, it was shocking to never have seen this before. And for all of you that are in the room, as well as City Council, it brought up a few questions for me. And one of those is if you are a homeowner currently in the city?
Point of order, please address council.
Sure. As residents of the city of Kent, if you think about your own home, would you say that your foundation is plum? If you are like me, one reaction was, well, I don't really know what the definition of plum is. And then the second would be, well, I own a century home in Kent, so it's sandstone, and it's probably crumbling a little bit, so no, I guess it's not. Another question I would have for you as a homeowner in the city of Kent, is your grading and your soil the way that it should be? Is the grading making sure that there's no puddling water at the base of your foundation? Again, I'm not a landscaper, I don't have water in my basement, but maybe it could say that my grading isn't proper. Another question I would ask you is your interior kept? Do you have any flaking paint on your walls, or any cracks on your ceilings? I do, I have children. And so if you came in my home, maybe you would find that. My other question for you would be, is would it be okay for you if a city official came in your home? You didn't ask them to come in your home, you didn't invite them in your home, they don't have a warrant to come in your home. And not only do they come in your home, but you have to pay them $100 to do so, for every unit that you own, and $5 for every additional bedroom. That is what's in this violation guidance form that I received. I'm not against the safety and health for our tenants. In fact, when I just purchased a home over on Rockwell, the first thing that we did when we bought it was put central air in. We fixed four boards on a deck. We did everything that we could for our tenants. But the things that are on this form are so subjective. That's what scares us as landlords. If some, an official came to my house and said that my foundation wasn't plum, and they want us to fix that, it could be $20,000. I asked this question in my hearing to the Community Development Board.
You have a half a minute.
Sure, the answer that I got was that they wouldn't do that. But my answer back was, you could. Whether or not they choose to do that, it's too much power. They could do that based on this form. That is a fear for us. The tenants don't want unwelcome intruders into their home, and they have no choice. As a landlord, we have to do that, or we are threatened with condemnation and fines. The tenant has no choice on that. So I'm asking that we look to either suspend this program, or look to amend the different codes that are on this, and work with your landlords. We want the safety and health of our tenants.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next.
Christopher Myers. Christopher Myers.
Christopher, your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
My name is Christopher Myers. I live at 220 East Elm Street, the best street in town bar none. I'm here tonight to, I want to talk about this housing code, and I have always found it to be very intrusive and invasive for my tenants to have somebody coming in and looking in their closets. But that is the way it is. The Health Department, I always got along very well with the Health Department. I had four houses. I got along with the Health Department, they did a very good job. I used the Health Department when I had tenants that were slobs, or garbage, or whatever I would call the Health Department, and they would come out and they would, and they would take care of it, because maybe my tenants didn't believe me, but they would believe these guys. So anyway, but I think this new thing is just a little too much. I mean, people live together, you know, like a guy and his girlfriend, or a guy, some guy and another old guy, or a couple of women living together, you know, maybe to, because they can't afford to live by themselves. But anyway, I, I'll just end there, it's a little bit much, I think. And, but I must, I must commend the Health Department for the fine job that I think they did. But then I ran a tight ship on all my rentals. And other than that, the only thing I have to say is that I mentioned to the mayor that the Record Courier has been advertising council meetings at seven o'clock on Tuesdays. So, I guess nobody reads the Record Courier, or somebody had mentioned this a long time ago. Anyway, thank you very much, and I'm not gonna say anything nasty about anybody tonight.
Thank you.
I, I'm gonna think it, but I'm not gonna say it.
Should have had a trophy for you tonight. Next.
Claire Wiley. Sorry.
Same thing, name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Claire Waithe, I live at 312 North Lincoln. And I'll be speaking on behalf of our Kent State undergraduate student government for the implementation of rental licensing program, in favor of it. So in 2018, 2019 academic year, 28,000 undergraduate students, 70% of which were living off campus. Many homes in Kent are over 100 years old, and come at low monthly cost to students. These low prices make it possible for a lot of students to pursue an education. As a student at Kent State, and as Chief of Staff of our student government, I believe all students deserve life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, as our founding fathers said. The last thing our students need to worry about is their safety. A plethora of studies have linked the feeling of safety to academic success with a strong linear association. I believe landlords should be responsible for providing a safe living condition for their tenants. This is not an invasion of privacy, this is public health and human rights. Landlords still make money off their properties. Landlords in the city of Kent should be appreciative that Kent State students want to live in the city of Kent and enjoy all the city has to offer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vala Zanali.
Name and address for the record, and you have three minutes, sir.
Hello, my name is Vala Zanali, I'm the Student Body President at Kent State University. All right, so, we have 6,400 students that live in the residence halls, and we have 20,000 that are living elsewhere. I should not have to worry about my girlfriend having her front door broken with the force of a finger. I should not have to worry about that any moment her roof can cave in and have asbestos over her. I should not have to worry about carbon monoxide poisoning. I, as a student, should not have to worry about my basic safety and human rights. As an advocate for our students, let it be known that living off campus can be great, but not if it puts our students in danger. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Antonia Sacco Newman.
Name and address for the record, please, and you have three minutes.
That's it.
It's okay.
Sorry, you had to break.
Well, you know, I used to teach, so we'll take control. My name is Antonia Sacco Newman. I live at 430 Suzanne Drive here in Kent. I live next door to a home that was vacated by people who couldn't pay their mortgage, and sat vacant for several years. Not because of the, not because of the economy downturn, which also happened, but because he was a drinker. They left, moved to Florida, because you can't bill people for what they did, or anything else, because there's no reciprocity between Ohio and Florida, I'm told. So the house sat vacant, and eventually was purchased by a woman and her husband, I guess, who live in Boston Heights. And I realize that we have some owners here who live in Kent, and I think that's remarkable. That's wonderful, that you take care of your property. The problem is, the problem is that we have owners who do not live here, and who do not care. The first renters moved in, they slapped up some new wallboard, put in some whatever, moved this couple in who then in rapid succession had two babies. They built an overhang because they saw what I was doing with my house, and the guy that was refurbishing decided to put an overhang on the back wall, or the back of the house. Never finished it in, left it open, never put gutters up, and I used to watch while squirrels, birds, and other critters used to go in and out of the roof. And there's no gutters. You talk about the grade of a property and whether it's holding water? Oh my God. I finally got disgusted and called the city, and it took a while, but that got fixed. Then, we have this couple living there with these babies, and they're throwing trash in bags on the garage floor, leave the garage door open for the cats, and then wonder why they have possums scattering their trash, and they don't use trash cans. I'm living in a place where my health and safety are at risk, because that's gonna attract possums, skunks, and yes, a raccoon invaded their house. I don't know if that was ever cleaned up, and then he came to my attic. Seven thousand dollars later, we got rid of my raccoon, evacuated everything in my attic, sanitized it, and sealed it up. This guy that was renting with his two babies in the house, and his wife who was a nurse, used a bow and arrow as the raccoon tried to get into the attic access in the garage. Please tell me that this is normal.
Will you face?
No, it's not.
Can you please face us?
Yes.
Thank you. You gotta have a minute to wind it up.
Okay. Behind me lives, is a house with Arnie Duncan as the owner, who lives in Aurora. Section 8, only occupants. He threw trash and everything from the house when he evicted them out on the back deck, because he didn't want to pay somebody to come take care of it. Then he came to my door to yell at me, because he wanted to know what I expected him to do to it, and why did I call the city? You people are making money off of this property, and my health and safety are being impacted by it. Now let's talk about the house across the street that was owned by another Kent resident, slumlord, and we had the SWAT team there, because there was a fugitive from Youngstown living in the house with them, and they were selling drugs in the front yard.
Can we wind it up a bit?
Okay. I want to commend you for doing this, and certainly hope that you will not repeal any of it, and just make it stronger. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll help you, we'll help you. You gotta squeeze it, it's tricky.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Andrew Madonio?
I wish to withdraw my name, please.
Okay. Michael Wiener?
Michael, good luck.
Okay, Michael Wiener? Yep.
Your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes, and please face us.
I went to school at Kent, I graduated from Kent. My wife and I took money from our wedding reception and invested in our first property in Kent, which is now part of the beautiful architecture building. We have, most of our properties are licensed, so the issues at hand don't seem to really apply so much aside from the plumbing and less specific language in the, yeah, ordinances. It's the fact that trying to enforce the bedroom restrictions on non-related people, on properties that have been running as a continuous business for nearly 50 years in my family, and now more than 20 years personally. I don't mind following the health codes. We keep clean places, we don't get complaints, we pass all our health inspections on our licensed rentals. But we've always been grandfather to the other properties, which we maintain at the same high level of safety. To pay another licensing fee, to not have bedrooms ripped away from our business, I actually don't think that's so bad. I'm not gonna complain about that, but I'd like it to be complete. You know, not pick and choose who. There's lots of examples of people getting away with it, so I don't want to be picked on, but I don't mind making it right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Ron Roter.
Name and address for the record, and please face us.
Ron Roter, 1387 Elizabeth Court. I own, I live in Kent, obviously. I have 11 property rentals. When I buy one, I spend about 15,000 to 20,000 dollars on that property rental, making it nice. When I buy a place, I walk in and I look to see if it's in someplace I'd want to live. If the ceiling fans work and they, they're fine, but they look like something my great-great-grandma would have, I get rid of it, and I go down to Home Depot and I buy something that I would like. That's how I run my business. In my lease, which is seven pages long, my tenants agree that I can go in every quarter, as long as I set an appointment with them, 25 hours in advance, and I do my own health and safety inspections. The person that does the work on my units is a licensed contractor, and I take health and safety very seriously. I make sure the smoke detectors are where they're supposed to be, carbon monoxide detectors are where they're supposed to be, and I put fire extinguishers in. That's what I do for my rentals. Not one, but usually one on every floor, because I think it's important. Now, I'm being billed to do an inspection that I already do. I rent to Section 8. If I choose to rent to Section 8, I am choosing also to then have PMHA come in and do an inspection of my properties. And they pass with flying colors. If you know somebody from PMHA, ask them about me and my properties. I have a good reputation. What I don't like are the fees that have come out of nowhere, okay? Earlier in this evening, we gave credit to our firemen, who did a great job saving lives on the Cuyahoga, okay? That is their job. That is what they do to serve. I'm just now retiring from 21 years in the Marine Corps, both active duty and reserve. I don't want thanks, I did my job. And what I expect of our government is to do their job. If I stepped out of line as a Marine, and I broke the laws of war, the Geneva Convention, or followed an unethical, unlawful order, I would be held accountable. I see these fees as unethical. You would not allow your, our police to step out of line and do something that was what they thought was the best. We follow the laws. And the reason I bring this up is because... And the reason I bring this up is because the state of Ohio, is my understanding, has already ruled on some of these things with other municipalities in the state. And they have said, no, they have shot down those municipalities for having people to trying to do the same thing Kent has been doing for years, and also about the fees. Now, if anybody doesn't know the term rapacious, please look it up, because the fees, in my opinion, are rapacious. They're expensive, and if any of you own your own businesses and all of a sudden the city stepped in and said, you know what, we're going to start charging a dollar per whatever you're selling, where are you going to recoup those costs? You're either going to have to eat it, but you're not in the business to just spend money, you're in the business to make money.
I'm going to have to ask you to wind it up. Your time's up.
Could you give me a 30-second?
You've got 30 seconds, let's go.
Okay. So, you would pass that cost on to your clients, on to your customers. If this continues to go forward, I'm in the business to run good rentals. I can't make them quality rentals if I'm now paying the city to do something I'm already doing that the state says you shouldn't be doing. That is all I have.
All right, thank you, and thank you for your time, sir.
Bernie Noble.
Name, address, you have three minutes, and please face us.
I don't want to take that long. Bernie Noble, Mogadore Road, Kent, Ohio. I started off the 17th meeting here for my tenants. They don't want people intruding in their homes. One of them even thinks it's a violation of their Fourth Amendment. If there's any problems, like the one lady had here previously, that we have the Health Department, we have other fair housing boards, there's other government entities that she can call or anybody can call, and they will be on this. I think this is just the money-grabbing fees from the cities. A hundred dollars per house, five dollars a bedroom, and like the gentleman before me, that gets passed right on down the line. My tenants, I almost call them family because several of them have been with me over 20-plus years. They don't want strangers coming into their homes, going through their stuff. They don't even want me there unless there's a problem, and then they usually want me to send somebody that can fix the problem, not even necessarily me. Now, in the 17th meeting, you were asked to disregard that, but the director stated that the inspections were going okay. Well, they're not going okay. There's all kinds of problems being had with us. If you read sound off, there's all kinds of people blowing up in there. The one gentleman wrote in that his landlady was great, his neighbors are great, and an inspector came through and went through his entire house, and he was asking the paper, isn't there some kind of law against this? So, this needs to stop. The people do not want it. The community of Kent does not want these inspections. Thank you.
Name and address.
Mike Kornick. Mistake. Deborah Redman.
Name and address, three minutes, and face us, please.
Deborah Redman, 141 South Manaway Street. I like to say, when my husband and I first got married, we bought a house at 208 West Elm Street. We were right next to Jerry Sales Cleaners. It was sold to us as a student rental. When we decided we wanted to get licensed, we went to the city because we're doing it the right way. And the city tells us, we're not zoned for student rental. So, what they did to us is say, go to the neighbors within so many feet and find out if it's been used as a student rental in the past. It was. And so, we were allowed to continue as a student rental, we had to upgrade the parking. Now, when I, my husband and I bought a house at 141, or 139, 141, 43 South Manaway Street, we knew that if we kept it as a three-family residence, it would be licensed and inspected. We made it into a two-family residence, so we didn't have to be licensed and inspected, and we lived in that house all these years. Now, our daughter lives on the other side. It's a duplex. We don't want it to be anything less than a duplex, but are we going to have to be licensed and inspected because our daughter lives next door? She's a licensed foster parent in Portage County. She gets a fire inspection, she gets inspected by the county on a regular basis. Why should we have to have y'all coming in, charging us $100? Did we pay $100 for the whole building, or is it $100 for each side? We have six bedrooms in that house. You know, our kids, we kind of run a homeless shelter. Our kids aren't related to us, so how does that work for us? We're a little concerned that we don't want people in our house looking at our kids that are afraid of strangers, are, we're worried about who could be coming around that could hurt our children. And so I just think that the City of Kent has plenty of ordinances in place, we have plenty of laws, like when my neighbor decided they didn't like my sheep years ago, did they put it to vote that we could, when we were legal to have farm animals, we went through health and safety, said we were legal. Everywhere we looked, zoning, everything, we were legal, so we had sheep and some chickens. The neighbors didn't like it. Did the City of Kent get to vote to say that I should get rid of my animals, my kids should have to drop out of 4H? No. Four people, maybe five, didn't like to have sheep in the City of Kent, and all the rest of us got screwed. And that, I think, is what's going to happen here. I would like to see, yes, people that have, we have plenty of ordinances. If you have a neighbor that doesn't take care of their property, you call on them. You have the Health Department come out and look. Our properties, anytime we've-
Will you wind it up? Your time's up.
Okay. Anytime we've ever rented, we always pay for the water and the trash removal, and we tell our tenants.
Brett Roberts.
Name, address, and-
Brett Roberts, 1345 Dale Side Drive, Henley, Ohio. I have a duplex in Kent. I have several properties, but the one I want to talk about tonight is my duplex in Kent.
Are you talking to the microphone, please?
Bought it years ago with my partner and put about $50,000 into the property. Surrounding our property is 14 student rentals. Between Crane Avenue all the way down to Water Street where it hits Brady, how do I know that? I know everyone that owns the houses. It's a three-bedroom and a one-bedroom. City of Kent says, Mr. Roberts, you can only have two people in each unit unless they're related. Sometimes that doesn't always work for us. We're in violation. I don't know, I talked to Bob Nietzsche about turning the house around, making it a two and a two. I'll spend 15,000, 20,000 to do that. At the end of the day, there's going to be two college kids on one side, two college kids on the other. What have we really changed here? Instead of having three college kids in one and one in another, I'm going to now have two and two. Did I disrupt the neighborhood? What did I do wrong? The City of Kent says I'm doing something wrong. I could understand if it was in a different neighborhood, not surrounded by students. In this specific instance, I think the city should come to me and say, Mr. Roberts, we're going to grant you a non-conforming duplex. I understand you're surrounded by students, we get your point. That's what I'm hoping to achieve. One more thing on the City of Kent, I have a property at 119 South Manaway, licensed boarding house. Mr. Delone, either you or your family used to live there.
I did.
The gentleman next door to me, Steve, his wife's dying, he's coming to me all the time, Brett, I want to sell the house. It's in Hull. I went down and talked to Heather File. I said, Heather, I'll buy this house. I can buy it for 60, 70,000. It's a hole. Tell you what I'll do, I can't have two people living there, I can't make my money because I'm going to need to put 50, 60,000 into this property, but I'm willing to do so. I will side it, I will put a new roof on, I'll put all new windows, I'll get it looking really nice, but for me to invest 130,000 into this property, I need to have three college kids who live next to a boarding house live there. She said, Brett, it's never going to happen. I said, well, can I talk to somebody on City Council or maybe the city planner about what I want to do and the improvements I want to make to this neighborhood? No, it's not going to happen.
You've got to have a minute.
That's pretty much the gist of my story, and I just wish I could talk to the City of Kent and say, I want to make these improvements to our town. Mr. Fiala, you saw the house on Cherry Street that we did, right next to the old Secconi's. Beautiful property, that's what we do, and that's what I want to continue to do with the City of Kent. I just want some cooperation. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Brad Dickerson.
Scratch that one.
Okay. And Jim.
Howk.
Name and address, and you have three minutes, and please address us.
Hi, Jim Howk, 217 East Main Street, Kent. And I'm here to let you guys know, most of the properties that you're coming into with this ordinance are owned by members of the City of Kent. Either people that own businesses here, have lived here their whole lives, or own rentals here. Most are not out-of-town landlords, most are local residents that you're dealing with. I'm going to give you an example of a property that I have and why this iron fist approach that's being taken by the city is going to lead to nothing but bad blood between local landlords, local residents, and businesses. I have a house that's between the Province and Kent State University. It's been rented since 1968. I have affidavits going back to 1968, which I presented to the city. Cities coming in, as far as I've heard, I haven't received any indication otherwise, those affidavits are not being accepted. What do you guys want to be done with these neighborhoods? Do you want us to upkeep these properties and put money into it and keep them vital rental properties? Yet, an iron fist approach of just shutting down landlords, not working with people that have owned properties for 10, 20, 30 years, recognizing that, okay, we come into this property, there's been three or four bedrooms, there's going to continue to be this, but you can only rent it to two people, even though it's been rented that way for, I mean, this one over 50 years? I really want you guys to take a hard, hard look at this ordinance and the way that it's being enforced, and talk to the city, talk to the city manager, talk to the Building Department. Let them know that this really is impacting local landlords, local residents, and their ability to upkeep their properties. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
That's it? All right, thank you, everybody, for their input. We're going to move on to written communications with the court. Read the written communications, please.
Planning Commission staff reported a meeting agenda for August 6, 2019, received July 30, 2019. Sustainability Commission meeting agenda for August 12, and the minutes from July 1, received August 8, 2019. Standing Rock Cemetery trustees' regular meeting minutes of July 11, received August 6, 2019. New liquor license permit from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for Angel Campos LLC, doing business as Coyotes Mexican Grill Canteen, 2500 State Route 59, Suites 18 and 20, received July 30, 2019.
Move to- Wait, please note, this is not in the city limits, it's actually in Franklin Township.
Move to return with no comment.
Second. Second by John, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, further.
A notification from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control of all liquor permits set to expire and up for renewal on October 1, 2019, received July 16, 2019, and Chief Lee returned, no objections to those automatic renewals.
Move to return with no objections.
Eric, do we have to take any action on this?
No.
No action to the court.
Standing Rock Cemetery trustees' regular meeting minutes of August 8, received August 14, 2019, and after publication of the agenda, the Park and Recreation Board packet for the meeting of August 15, 2019, was received. That's it.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
City managers' report, Jack.
I'd like to move items 1 through 10 on the city manager's report.
Second by John, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Is there further, Mr. Row?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we're in the standing committees. Committee as a whole, I need a motion for the committee meeting minutes of August 17 and the one-
August 7, right.
August 7.
I'll move the committee meeting minutes of August 7.
I'll second that.
And the action recommended.
All right.
Just one.
Now, we're going to get into the appointments with the court. Oh, I'm sorry.
You have to just do the minutes first, Jerry, and then the action.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, well, I was going to say, she didn't want to-
All right. All right, all in favor of the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Abstained.
Now, I'll move the-
Wait a minute, how many abstentions?
Two.
Two abstentions.
Now, I'll move the action.
Second.
Any discussion on the actions? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right. We need the names of the ballots, winners.
We need the names for the ballots.
Which one do you want to do first? What do we have to?
Architecture Review Board.
Bridget Tipton for Architecture Review Board.
Motion to, I need a motion to put-
Do you want me to just do all these?
Yeah.
You want to go do them all, then come back and-
Go through and then fill in any-
All right, go ahead, let's read them all.
William Dunick for Design. Jordan Sindrich and Deborah Douglas for Housing. Morgan Tipton for Parda. Thomas Simpson for Parking. Move to approve. No, now you have to, we have to, okay, the-
What'd you say, Mike?
We have to do each one separate.
We have to do each one.
Then we have to, we'll try to think. I know, I know.
All right. Would the court read, Jack make the motion to approve the winners?
That's what I was trying to say.
Yes, I'll move the appointments.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, with the court read draft number 201984, entitled only.
Draft 201984, a resolution appointing Bridget Tipton to the Architectural Review Board and declaring an emergency.
Suspension.
Second, please call the roll for suspension.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar. Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Resolution 201984 passes.
Okay, thank you, with the court read draft number 201985, entitled only.
Draft 201985, a resolution appointing William Dunick to the Design and Preservation Committee and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second, please call the roll for suspension.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
Resolution 201985 passes.
Okay, thank you, with the court read draft number 201986, entitled only.
Draft 201986, a resolution appointing Jordan Sindrich to the Fair Housing Board and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Please call the roll for suspension.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Amrin.
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon.
Yes.
Resolution 201986 passes. Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Resolution 201986 passes.
Okay, with the court read draft number 201987, entitled only.
Draft 201987, a resolution appointing Deborah Douglas to the Fair Housing Board and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second, please call the roll for suspension.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second. Second by Roger, made by John.
Thanks.
Which one is the part of one?
Have you gotten to the part of one yet, or no?
No.
Okay, all right.
It's this one?
No, it's next.
Oh, it's next one, all right.
Call the roll on suspension.
Adoption.
Adoption, all right.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Resolution 201987 passes.
Okay, thank you, with the court read draft number 201988, entitled only.
Draft 201988, a resolution appointing Morgan Tipton to the Portage Area Regional Transportation Authority and declaring an emergency.
Move adoption.
Second.
I'm sorry, move suspension. Thank you.
Okay, second by Roger, please call the roll on suspension.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Abstain.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second. Second by Mike, is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Please call the roll for adoption.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Abstain.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Resolution 201988 passes.
Okay, thank you, with the court read draft number 201989, entitled only.
Draft 201989, a resolution appointing Thomas Simpson to the Parking Action Committee and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second. Second by Mike, please call the roll on suspension.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Mike, any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Please call the roll for adoption.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Resolution 201989 passes.
Okay, thank you, that's it for Committee of the Whole, Committee Development, Mr. Kuhar.
I move the committee meetings of August 7, 2019.
Second.
Second by Mike, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Abstain. Abstain.
Two abstentions? All right.
And I move the two actions.
Second.
Second by Mr. Farrar, is there any discussion on the actions? Seeing none, all in favor, or the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, thank you, with the court read draft number 201990, entitled only.
Draft 201990, an ordinance amending Title VII Environmental Health and Housing Maintenance Code, Rental Licensing of the Kent Codified Ordinances to Remove Surplus Language and Add Clarifying Language for the Inspection and Licensing of Residential Rental Units and Declaring an Emergency.
Suspension.
Second, second by Roger, please call the roll for suspension.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Heidi, is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Heidi?
Yeah. I want to say that I'm actually hesitant to reduce the penalties and reduce, but, you know, in light of, you know, some, we've obviously gotten the landlord's, land property owner's attention, so I'm hoping that we can work together. Because, you know, since I came onto counsel in 2008 and before, the most, the issue that has taken most of my time and energy has been the condition of rental properties and the fact that there, many of them are in zoning violations. I've had neighborhood meetings, I get complaints from my residents, my constituents, I even get complaints from landlords who want to have a better, a more level playing field. People that take care of their houses, they want the others to have to do that, too. The first meeting I had with students, I thought was going to be about a complaint about our police. It turned out to be housing. They want safe housing. They want safe housing. They are not empowered typically, at that young age, to advocate for themselves. This is something that we should do, as well as elderly people who are renting and young families. I just think that we've done the right thing. I, so, in reducing the penalty and making it rather a civil issue is my understanding of this, we are giving a concession and saying, please work with us. Our property values of homeowners are at stake as well. You look at, you know, you can tell by looking in my neighborhood whether a place is a rental or a place is homeowner-occupied. Maybe there's a few exceptions, but typically, that's the case. I'd really like us to lift all boats and make this all a community we can all be proud of. And so, I will vote for this.
Any other discussion? Mr. Kuhar?
Yeah, you know, I want to talk about what we're actually changing. We're changing the amount of a fine and changing things to civil instead of criminal infractions. Now, I don't expect anybody who makes a civil mistake to be fined as much as a rapist would be fined, because $3,000 is a felony fine. It's not a civil infraction fine. I'd hate to see someone go to jail because they left their trash cans on the curb too many days. So, you know, all we're doing is we're coming, we're not only combining our health and our community development codes so they mesh together, we're coming back into reality because these are civil offenses, not criminal offenses.
Anybody else? I got a question for the law director.
She's not here. She's not here.
Anybody on this table, counsel that has rentals, should abstain from this?
I don't believe that it is necessary for anyone to abstain just because they own rental properties, that it is, no, just no.
All right, I got your legal definition, that's all, kind of.
Well, you wouldn't have a majority if they did.
Well, just trying to put it out there, John. All right, would the court read the roll for adoption?
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ordinance 201990 passes.
Okay, thank you, with the court read 201991, entitled only.
Draft 201991, an ordinance authorizing the city manager or his designate to approve the proposed updated memorandum of understanding and addendum to the 2009 Neighborhood Stabilization Grant, NSP, subrecipient agreement between the City of Kent and Portage County to utilize the program income for a CDBG-eligible project and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Second by Heidi, please call the roll for suspension.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Heidi, is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Ordinance 201991 passes.
Okay, that completes it for Community Development Finance Committee, Mr. DeLeon.
Yeah, I'd like to move the committee meeting minutes from August 7, 2019.
Second.
Second by Jack, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Abstain.
Oh, abstain.
Oh, two abstentions.
Yeah, I'd like to move the four actions recommended.
Second.
Any discussion on the actions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, thank you, with the court read draft number 201992, entitled only.
Draft 201992, an ordinance authorizing the City of Kent to submit three funding applications totaling $16,850 and to execute the subsequent agreements with the Akron Metropolitan Area Transportation Study, AMATS, and the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, and to accept the grants if awarded with corresponding appropriation of funds for the East Main Street area improvements and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension. Second.
Please call the roll on suspension.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Mr. Farrar, is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the roll for adoption.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Ordinance 201992 passes.
Tracy, why don't you pay attention?
Ordinance 201992 passes.
Okay, thank you. With the Court Greet Draft Number 201993 entitled only?
Draft 201993 and ordinance amending ordinance number 2018-142, the current appropriation ordinance passed December 19th, 2018, so as to adjust appropriations, transfers, and advances from the various funds of the City of Kent to individual accounts for the current expenses of the city for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2019, and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Second by Gwen. Please call the roll for suspension.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Mr. Farrar. Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Ordinance 201993 passes.
Okay, thank you. With the Court Greet Draft Number 201994 entitled only?
Draft 201994, an ordinance authorizing the city manager or his designated need to accept a bid of $40,000 from Renovo Fire Department to purchase the City of Kent's used 1992 Pierce dash heavy rescue truck without competitive bidding and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension. Second.
Second by Mike. Please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second. Second by Roger. Is there any discussion on adopting this? Seeing none, please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Ordinance 201994 passes.
Okay, thank you. With the Court Greet Draft Number 201995 entitled only?
Draft 201995, an ordinance authorizing the certification of non-payment of water use charges, wastewater use charges, stormwater utility charges, and recycling, solid waste collection charges to the county auditor in order to allow for the placement of the certified amount on the real property tax list and duplicate against the property for the non-payment of water use charges, wastewater use charges, stormwater utility charges, and recycling slash solid waste collection charges, and declaring an emergency.
Suspension.
Second. Please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar? Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Mike. Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Ordinance 201995 passes.
Okay, thank you. With the Court Greet Draft Number 201996 entitled only?
Draft 201996, an ordinance authorizing the certification of delinquent mowing bills, property maintenance violations citations, zoning violation citations, and health department violation citations to the county auditor in order to allow for the placement of the certified amount on the real property tax list and duplicate against the property served by the mowing services, property maintenance violation citations, zoning violation citations, health department violation citations, and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension. Second.
Second by Mike. Please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Heidi. Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Ordinance 201996 passes.
Okay, thank you. With the Court Greet Draft Number 201997 entitled only?
Draft 201997, an ordinance authorizing the certification of non-payment of bills for residents resulting from the 2018 annual concrete repair program to the county auditor in order to allow for the placement of the certified amount on the real property tax list and duplicate against the property for the non-payment of sidewalk repairs and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension. Second.
Second by Mike. Please call the roll for suspension.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Mike. Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the roll for adoption.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ordinance 201997 passes.
Thank you. With the Court Greet Draft Number 201998 entitled only?
Draft 201998, an ordinance accepting a donation of two hard plastic pet carriers donated by Darlene Ardely, valued at $40 each, and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension. Second.
Second by Mike. Please call the roll on suspension.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Adoption.
Second.
Second by Mr. Farrar. Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Gwen?
I'd just like to express our gratitude and thanks for the donation of the animals in Kent that may need it.
Okay, thank you. With the Court Greet Roll on adopting this ordinance?
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ordinance 201998 passes.
Okay, thank you. With Court Greet Draft Number 201999 entitled only?
Draft 201999, an ordinance accepting a grant from the Ohio Arts Council in the amount of $3,171 to be used to support the Kent Creativity Festival, which will be held on September 28th, 2019, and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension. Second.
Second by Mike. Or is that Gwen? Gwen, I'm sorry. Call the roll for suspension.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second. Second by Garrett. Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Please call the roll on adoption.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ordinance 201999 passes.
Okay, thank you. That's it for Finance Committee, Health and Public Safety. There's no action. Land use, there's no action. Streets and sidewalks, Mr. Sedoti?
Yes, I'd like to move the committee meeting minutes of August 7th, 2019. Second.
Second by Jack. Any discussion on that? Seeing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Thank you.
Upstand.
One exception?
Two.
Two?
Thank you.
Is it both here or just one?
Yes, both.
All right.
I'd like to move the four actions listed.
Second. Is there any discussion on the actions? All in favor of the actions, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign? Okay, with the Court Greet Draft Number 2019100 entitled only?
Draft 2019100, an ordinance amending section 353.02 of the codified ordinances of the City of Kent titled Parking Regulation Authorization to remove the two-hour-on-street parking restriction after 5:00 p.m. on specified streets in the Central Business District and declaring an emergency.
Suspension.
Second.
Second by Heidi. Please call the roll for suspension.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Move adoption. Second.
Second by Mike. Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Ordinance 2019100 passes.
Okay, thank you. With the Court Greet Draft Number 2019101 entitled only?
Draft 2019101, an ordinance authorizing the city manager or his designated need to approve a new special event application from the City of Kent and Kent State University for the 2019 Kent Creativity Festival, Plan B, to be held on Saturday, September 28th, 2019, and the temporary closure of Erie Street between Haymaker Parkway and Depister Street, Erie Street between Depister Street and Water Street, and a portion of the South Water Street parking lot. A Plan B for Green Energy Ohio Tour, Clean Transportation Drive-In scheduled to be held in conjunction with Kent Creativity Festival, and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Second by Mike. Please call the roll on suspension.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Mike. Does anybody got any discussion on this item? Seeing none, please call the roll for adoption.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ordinance 2019101 passes.
Okay, thank you. With the Court Greet Draft Number 2019102 entitled only?
Draft 2019102, an ordinance authorizing the city manager or his designated need to renew an agreement giving consent to the State of Ohio Department of Transportation for participation in their Bridge Inspection Program Services for the years 2020 through 2022, PID 109334, and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension. Second.
Second by Garrett. Please call the roll for suspension.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar? Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Garrett. Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Ordinance 2019102 passes.
Okay, thank you. With the Court Greet Draft Number 2019103 entitled only?
Draft 2018103, an ordinance authorizing the city manager or his designated need to execute an easement to access for the purpose of installing a concrete pad and bus passenger shelter from Kentway, Inc., as grantor to the City of Kent and the Portage Area Regional Transit Authority, PRTA, as grantees, and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension. Second.
Second by Mike. Please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Mike. Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Ordinance 2019103 passes.
Okay, thank you. That's it for sidewalks and street utility committee. Anything on the special committee reports? Unfinished business, any? Under new business, item need council action or referral. Well, let's start with John and move on down the line.
I'd like to make a motion to move in the committee to look at and possibly make some adjustments to the new single-family resident or the residential licensing.
Second.
Second. Who seconded? Tracy? Okay, further discussion, John?
Without getting in a committee, I think there's a couple of issues that we might need to look at a little closer and make some evaluations.
Anybody?
Like what?
Well, I remember, I think, way back when I first got on council. I don't know whether it was a discussion in council. I'd kind of liked Dawn to look at it. It was either in 2008, '09, or '10 about the two-bedroom unrelated people versus three occupants. And I know I had this discussion, and there's a reason behind it, so at least we can discuss that again and find out, you know, the reason behind it.
Anybody else? Heidi?
Yeah, I'm not going to vote for that. I think we have gone over and over and over this for over 12 years. And with, you know, with our new definition of family, a lot of these issues that people raise about the unmarried couples and things like that can be solved with our new, with our definition that's already included in the ordinance. Other than that, I think it's a slippery slope to start grandfathering people in because they have a certain number of bedrooms. My residents are really not happy about the zoning violations, and I don't think they'd be very happy with us if we open that back up.
Okay, anybody else? John?
Yeah, I don't think the new definition of family meets the needs of what the problems are. And then we also, you know, might be possibly having some Fourth Amendment violations that we need to get rid of before we have them and have a lawsuit against the city.
All right. Further, anybody? All in favor of John's motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Well, let's have a show of hands, all in favor of it. One, two. Where's yours, Gwen? It was up and down.
No.
Oh, all right. One, two, three. Three in favor?
Robin's a yes also.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see it. One, two, so that's five, so. It's a winner.
One, two, three, wait.
Five, four.
Five to five, four.
Five.
I only went to the public school system here in Kent. I think five is bigger than four.
Five in favor?
Oh, wait a minute. One. You did.
Let's put our hands up for Heidi.
Three.
She missed this. Roger?
Are we voting for Heidi or for?
No. The motion.
Voting the.
Roger, Tracy, John.
No, that's four.
Four.
That's four.
Where'd I get five before? All right. I guess.
It's the Kent Public Schools.
Yeah, that's a public school problem. I did start out at St. Pat's.
Who was your principal?
You weren't born yet.
I know.
All right, so it's going to go back to committee?
It's not.
No, it's not.
Feated, four.
It was defeated, five.
Okay, you're right. You're right. I lost track.
That's the public school.
It was that St. Pat's. Sorry about that. All right. Future council meetings, anything?
Wait a minute.
Oh, you got more?
Yes.
Well, let's get on it.
I got a new business.
All right.
Okay, well, I would like to make a motion to dedicate the new Kentway bus stop to Council, in Councilman William, is it F. Schultz's name? That's my motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Farrar. Further discussion, Heidi?
Yeah. First of all, we've tried for many, many years to get a bus stop at Kentway, and Frank Hairston, who just recently retired from PRTA, has brought this up a number of times with myself, and I think with Robin as well, and probably with Bill back when he was alive. Bill was a, that he wanted to name it after Bill Schultz. He wanted to dedicate it to him. Bill was a strong advocate for public transportation, and also a very strong advocate for the elderly and people that needed public transportation. So I think it's really fitting that we do this. And I'm not sure if I mentioned it, but I'd like to see some kind of plaque in the motion that names it.
Second.
It's been seconded?
Oh.
It's been seconded. Robin, you want a further comment?
Yeah, it really does feel most appropriate that, I think, especially being in his former ward and what he stood for. I wholeheartedly would support that. And I think when people actually go in and they're in that shelter, it would be nice to see the name, perhaps the picture, or some type of inscription. And I, you know, it's just, I think that that's necessary, not just necessary, but very appropriate for us to follow through with in his name.
What about ownership? Can we do this? That's true. We'll have to talk.
Discussing it right now.
Just a thought in my mind.
Who owns this? Yeah.
Yeah, who owns it? Thank you, Mike. I'm not allowed to speak like you guys are in a motion, so you bring it up.
I was going to ask, who's going to own it? Is it part of us?
Yeah, there's the problem.
Can we change the motion to let's ask PRTA if we can?
That would be.
We'll work on it.
Okay. I think, yeah.
I mean, it's worthwhile. Don't get me wrong, it's just the ownership might be a problem.
That's what I'm saying, who owns it?
Is there further discussion?
I guess since it was, since it was brought to us by an employee of PRTA, I think probably that's, not that we can do that, but I'm just saying it seems like, since it was brought to us by, at that time, a staff member of PRTA, it would seem that it would be logical for them to support it as well.
Yeah.
Because they did advance.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Can you make your motion to say with the approval of PRTA?
Correct, with the approval of PRTA.
Pardon?
They have a board.
That's my problem.
Yeah, they have a board.
With the approval of PRTA.
All right, is that, who seconded it? Tracy, who seconded it?
No, Garrett and Robin.
I seconded it.
Is that all right with you?
Yeah, it's fine.
All right, now we're talking about the motion with the approval of PRTA. Is there any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, thank you. Tracy?
So, I've been working with the residents of Four Seasons still, and there was a problem there. Our gas meters on the front of the building, right next to the parking lot. And a couple of years ago, one of the residents accidentally stepped on the gas instead of stepping on the brake. So, she ran into the gas meters and destroyed the gas meters in the apartment, and they had to be evacuated, everything like this. So, we had been working with the management, and they had said that they were going to put concrete planters in front of those gas meters to help prevent further accidents like that. But they are not going to do that. So, I would like to make a motion to ask council to pass a resolution authorizing the administration to send a letter to the NRP group requesting that they put in the Ohio Fire Code safety compliance requirements for protection of outside gas meters.
Second.
Second by Mike. Further discussion, Tracy?
No, I mean, the, yeah. They're grandfathered in right now, and they should be putting these things out because there was an accident that happened that was very detrimental. So, they should, as good landlords, be doing this on their own anyway. I mean, we can't force them to. We can just request that they do it.
Okay, Mike, you have further discussion? Anybody else? John?
I guess my only question is, and I think she answered, is that we can't force them to. So, are we just going to somehow friendly ask them to
Suggest it.
do the right thing and not make it look like a death threat, or we're going to fine them or send them to jail?
Oh, it is private property. Anybody else have discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Tracy?
So, I happened to be down at the Community Development Department the other day, and I was told that they're buying a new car. And the thing is, they're just buying, I guess there's all these, I don't know.